Well, hello everybody and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live on Penfield TV's government access channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303, also online at PenfieldTV.org and social media platforms Facebook and YouTube via Town of Penfield Television. Following tonight's proceedings, the video recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. All you need to do is search for Penfield TV in your app store and you should know it is free. Tonight, if anybody wishes to address the board on any public hearing matter, there's going to be an opportunity to do that in several different ways. One way is to call this phone number, I'll put it out there, and if these folks remind me, I'll repeat it a couple times throughout the meeting. Another way, you'll see me looking at this computer every once in a while, that's, people can enter comments or questions electronically through the website, so we just check to see if there's anything there. And then, of course, the other way is for folks to be here in person, come on up and give us their comments. We think your involvement is valuable and we certainly encourage any participation in these proceedings. The meeting is going to have two parts. The first part will be really quick, I imagine. It's just a work session where we look at the minutes from the last meeting and vote on those, and then take care of any other business we may have, like tabled matters, but I don't think we have any tonight. So, we won't take any recess in between unless somebody tells me they really need one. And then, we'll go right into the public hearings. We'll ask the applicant to come up and give us a name and address, and then typically what we do is we have the board member that's assigned his lead on these applications walk the applicant through. The reason we do that is not to stifle any conversation, but it's rather to acknowledge the fact that applicants are required to submit written applications, and they do. And generally speaking, they're pretty thorough. All tonight's are very thorough and they contain really a lot of the detail that we need to make our decision. So, we think it's easier for everybody, including the applicant, for us to walk you through. It doesn't always happen, but that's typically the way it happens. And lastly, I'd just like to point out, every month, we think the town does a good job of making sure that people in the town and any other concerned citizens are aware of what our agenda is and what's going to be heard. And so, that is so people know what their rights are and can come in and exercise those rights, as we just talked about. Well, how does a town do that? Well, it publishes our agenda on the website and here at the town sends postcards out to folks that are property owners within a certain number of feet of the subject property, and also makes the applicant post the signs in the yard, which many of you have done or you certainly have seen. So, once again, we do appreciate any public comment and certainly we appreciate hearing from the applicant. With that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. And let's see, we do have the first order of business is approval of the minutes from last meeting. We have a motion on that?
I'll move to approve as written.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We, as I've said, have no tabled applications, so we will proceed right to tonight's public hearing. May we have the first application, please?
Kirk Wright, Sign and Lighting Services LLC, on behalf of IDHONDA, 871 Panorama Trail South, Rochester, New York, 14526, requests approval for a special use permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow more than one building sign, whereas a maximum of one building sign is permitted under Section 250-10.13-C of the code at 871 Panorama Trail South. The property is currently or formerly owned by 871 Panorama Trail South LLC and is owned GB, SBL #138.12-1.7.2, application #25Z0027.
Good evening. Again, if we could have your name and address.
Yes, good evening. I am not Kurt, I'm Alan Gadera, Architect of Record for this building project. Kurt cannot be here tonight for a personal matter.
Okay, but you're certainly authorized.
Yes, I'm authorized to talk for them and I represent IDHONDA and MRV Group.
Thank you.
Great. First and foremost, that was a very well structured application, so all the details were perfect and were in there. So, as I read it, you're looking to replace two signs?
Yes, sir.
And add a third sign?
Yes.
Which would bring the total from three signs to four signs?
Yeah.
So, what you're looking for is for us to provide variance to allow for that fourth sign, as that's, that was you sent here by the town board, I guess two of the signs were already pre-approved?
Yes.
Okay. So, a couple of questions. So, the new sign that you're talking about, the certified sign, certified pre-owned sign, talk me through why it needs to be quite as large as it is in regards to the other signs that are on the building?
There's two factors associated with that. The first one is the scale of the building. We felt that it met the appropriate scale with the rest of the signage. Also, it is recommended by Honda as their dealership. That's one of their requirements.
Got it, understood. And then, my second question would be, since we are, you are leaving the service sign, is there any way you could combine the certified pre-owned and service sign together and eliminate the need for the fourth sign?
No. The service entrance is in a different location.
Gotcha, yeah, another location. I did see that, but you know, we're always looking for ways to kind of scale back the variance. So, I mean, again, taking a look at the rendering there, the sign certainly is in keeping with the building and the color codes and everything look good. I don't really have any other questions at this point.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
You said the certified pre-owned was recommended by Honda, is that the sizes that they're looking for or just the text?
Yeah, they, with the geometry along with the rest of the building, there's kind of a ratio that they like to keep.
Okay.
And I bet the size has something to do with safety, because people are looking for where they need to go and if it's huge.
Helps with visibility from the street, yeah, certainly. And they have the second facility up the hill and it helps designate which one will be pre-owned and which facility is the new dealership.
All right, anything else from the board? I do not see any voting, participants or electronic, anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? Okay, let's get into it then. Let's do the environmental first?
Yes, so from the environmental, I would list this as an unlisted action pursuant to seeker with no further action required.
I'll second it. I guess issue index then.
Is it unlisted, so also asking for a negative declaration?
Oh, and negative, pardon, and also negative declaration.
All right, still seconding? All right, so we have a motion to declare it unlisted and issue a negative declaration? Further discussion? Sneezes?
Choo!
Okay. God bless you.
Thank you.
Let's add that to the motion. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits now?
Yeah, so, you know, based on the circumstances, and certainly there was an example of other dealerships in the area with their signage, I would move to approve this. Basically, it would allow for designation between the two different dealerships that they're trying to designate, and it's certainly in keeping with, in the past, other exceptions we've given, so I would move to approve.
Yeah, I'll second that, and I'll just add that, longtime business here, good business for the community, take very good care of the property, et cetera, so I'll second the motion to approve.
I'd also add that it's still below the maximum allowed for square footage of signage.
Right, good point. Okay, any other comments? So, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good job. Next application, please?
Alvaro Pareja Leccaros, 99 Penfield Crescent, Rochester, New York, 14526, requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a second accessory storage building, whereas a maximum of one accessory storage building is permitted under Section 250-5.1-D4 of the code with less front and side setback than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 99 Penfield Crescent. This property is currently or formerly owned by Alvaro and Mario Pareja Leccaros and is owned R120, SBL #138.06-3-10, application #25Z0028.
Thank you, Shannon. All right, may we have your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Alvaro Pareja Leccaros, and I am at 99 Penfield Crescent.
Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. So, you're looking really for two separate variances. One, the code allows for you to have one shed and this would add a second shed on your property, and then, secondly, the setbacks are smaller or you're needing a variance for that as well. So, just a few questions, as I did have a chance to review the application, and also myself and another member of the board, Dan, were able to actually get on property and really understand the layout, just because it's a little different property and, you know, the backyard is certainly very wooded, the neighborhood is a very wooded area as well. But, a few questions for you. First, why did you, why do you need the second shed? You have the one shed off to the side of the property, what is the second shed accomplishing?
So, the first shed is currently storage and full, not for, we've definitely tried to accommodate inside and out, but the second shed is intended to store wood for building. I'm a hobby woodworker and I've accumulated a lot underneath my kitchen and I can no longer store it there, as we need to do some fixes, and future intent for the existing shed, since it's sort of deteriorating and needs to be replaced, is to become more of a woodworking shop for myself in the future, once that's affordable. So, yeah, sort of having that available close by makes it...
Would it have been feasible to add this shed onto the existing shed or to expand the existing shed in any way?
Unfortunately, not. The amount of work required for that shed in the area around it would require extensive sort of work on the landscape as it goes directly into the slope, into the backyard. Approximately three-fourths of the property is already in the heavy slopes area, basically starting where that shed is, sort of as you could see from when you walked in, it immediately goes into a hill, and the entire floor of that shed is already kind of deteriorated because it was just laid on to dirt, so it's, yeah.
Got it. And then, off to the other side of the yard, I'm going to call it the front side yard area. There was a lot of wood over there, is the intent to take the wood that is currently sort of on that side of the property and store it now, or this would be?
No. So, that wood is for the chimney, just that's what that I've cut and used to heat the house. We've had a lot of trees fall and they've, we've just brought it up there so that we can heat the house, and that's just piled up wood. The wood that I plan to store there is currently underneath the kitchen, just piled there, and that's to build like projects and such, and so...
And when you think about this, so the variances on where the shed is currently, it's supposed to require a 50-foot setback, this is about 10 feet, did I get that right?
Yep.
10-foot setback. Is there anywhere else that you could have put the shed to be even a little bit more in compliance?
From evaluating the property and how much tree roots there are in the other areas, it would require like extensive, either, I guess, raising of the shed so that it doesn't affect the trees and the root system. When I redid the yard about a year and a half ago and replaced the grass with microclover, I came across the amount of large tree roots in that entire, basically, west side of the house, making it very difficult to place anything very easily. It also is, also hill area. There originally, a long time ago, was a shed off the edge of the sort of peninsula hill that is there, that was taken down a long time ago because of the erosion, and, yeah, so...
And putting it on the other side of the property where the wood piles are right now, that wasn't a feasible option?
Unfortunately, not, yeah.
You had mentioned this is just going to be storage of the wood, are you going to be having any lights out on the exterior?
Nope. Yeah, it's not connected to anything.
So, we've gotten two responses from this, one in support and then one not in support. The one not in support is actually the neighbor where the shed, sort of, the setback would encroach on their property. Have you talked any further with this neighbor? Is there any additional?
So, I talked to her husband, and her husband actually helped me like with the shed, and then she emailed saying she doesn't like it, so I'm not really sure how that went, because he helped me bring it up, but she, I haven't talked to her because she's previously verbally abused me when I've had family matters, and so I don't really engage with that as it's not a healthy dynamic.
And then, the other neighbor you've spoken to in favor?
Yeah. Yeah, she seems to be all in support, and the neighbor in front has also mentioned being in support of it, though I believe she has not sent anything in yet.
What's that person, I'm sorry Laura, but it just, what's that person's name?
Sandy Wildman.
But right across the street from that?
Yeah.
Kind of looking directly at the shed.
Yep.
So, the neighbor to, I don't know, direction, wha?
East.
East, west?
Is not in favor, and the one west is in favor.
Right, the one in west and the one in front are in favor, east is not. Those are the three properties that's around this.
So, if west is this way?
I don't...
And east is this way, what's that way? Really? Wow.
North.
Maybe a little girl knows.
Oh, Dan.
What other questions, Dan? You went to the property as well, what other questions am I not asking?
Well, I would ask about buffering, we talked about that. I mean, you indicated, if we could pull that up again, you know, the neighbor, one of the neighbors that's opposing it, because presumably her husband lives there as well. But, you know, there's some, there's a tree stub, and I know that tree was gone a long, long time ago, but one of the things that we always try to get folks to do when they're moving structures closer to the property line that allow it is to put up some buffering, so that sort of shields the view, if you will, from the affected neighbors. So, let me ask you, what sort of buffering would you be willing to do to protect your neighbor's view?
So, something that we actually would like to do is put up some bushes, both potentially in the front if it's feasible, and we can put up more to the side there. I know that we have already one pine tree that is growing right there, it's still young, but, and there's the pack of sanders that sort of is next to that tree stump that you mentioned, so we could definitely put something in place of that tree stump immediate, more so immediately than a tree that takes a while.
And, keep going, so the shed that's there, the bigger shed in the back, I thought I saw in your letter of intent that you intend to knock that down at some point?
Eventually replace it would be the goal, as time and finances allow.
Sure. And maybe sort of the same question Laura asked earlier, but let's say time and finances allow you to replace that shed in March. I know that's probably quicker, but let's just say, could you, because this shed here is, what, 36 square feet?
It's not a lot.
Three by 12?
Yeah, it's a pretty small shed.
Right.
Yeah.
So, could you replace the existing big shed with a shed that's 36 square feet long coming out, or did you already answer that in the sense because it's on the slope, you really?
I would still actually need a variance for that, because even the front of my house is only 40 feet from the property line.
Right.
So, and that how, the shed is also only like 10 feet from, or 18 feet from the, I don't remember exactly from the side, so...
So, you probably would still need two area variances, but you wouldn't need a variance allowing you to have two sheds when the code only allows one.
Yeah.
So, building a bigger replacement shed would eliminate the need for?
It would.
One variance, not the setbacks.
Yeah, it's definitely going to be...
I just, you know, I want to point that out, but right now, that's not in your plans for various reasons.
Yeah, not for the foreseeable future, unfortunately.
Right. And also, the question about storage of wood, the wood on the other side of the house is to repair the chimney or work on the chimney?
It's to burn.
Heat the house.
Heat the house, so...
Oh, firewood, it's firewood.
It's firewood.
Okay, I misunderstood, I'm glad, thank you for clarifying that.
So, that just goes as the winter.
All right, so you don't have any plans to store any wood that you'd be working on or working with in any place other than this shed?
Ideally, no, yeah.
Well, because what I ask you, if we were to approve this with the condition that you not store any wood in the yard, except wood, again, not firewood, but wood that you're going to be working with?
Lumber.
Lumber.
Thank you.
He's good. Except in that shed, and that if you were to stack up two-by-fours or, you know, four-by-eight pieces of plywood, that would violate?
Outside.
I mean, if you did it for a day or two, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about long-term.
Yeah.
Yeah, cover it up with a tarp or whatever that we've seen.
Oh, yeah, no.
Okay.
Ideally, would not like to do that, because that would ruin the wood, so...
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, to add that type of condition would be acceptable?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't see any problem with that.
Okay, I don't think I have anymore. Any other?
I just was going to ask if, will the exterior of that be done in such a way to match the house so that it doesn't stand out?
Yeah, right, right now, it's partially painted, but yeah, it's intended to match the house.
Yeah, that would be the goal, yeah, so that it kind of didn't stand out. I like the idea of putting the shrubs and stuff around it to kind of help create the barrier, yeah.
I agree.
That was my last one, any questions?
Yeah, we have a landscape architect here at town, that often, we make a condition of approval that the landscape architect go out and make a recommendation and that you abide by that recommendation.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions from the board? I don't, not see anybody on the phone nor electronic, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? No, okay, let us then go to the considerations, starting with the environmental.
This is a type-two action pursuant to seeker and no further action required.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the seeker and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now the merits.
So, I was going to do this all three?
Sure.
Together, so I make a motion to approve all three variances with conditions, and so the two conditions that I had noted was, as part of this, not having any lumber storage on the property, and all lumber storage specifically should be used for the shed. Did I say that correctly?
In the shed.
Outdoor storage of it.
Outdoor storage of it should be in the shed.
With the firewood being the exception.
Yeah.
Firewood being the exception. That's why I specified it as lumber to distinguish between firewood and lumber.
And I presume this condition is more so for like the front of the property, right?
For aesthetics, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. And then, secondly, to have the landscape architect, this was to go to the property to provide some recommendations and for you to act on those recommendations.
For buffering.
For buffering specifically. Based on that, when you think about the merits of this, the neighborhood of the character, it's within the character neighborhood in the sense that it is small, it is a second shed, but it is not obtrusive in any way. There really isn't a lot of alternative options. The property really doesn't have much of a backyard, the slope is an issue, there just isn't a lot of space. As you've mentioned before, the current existing shed is actually out of compliance as well and requires a variance, it was grandfathered in because of just the property layout itself. It is substantial when you think about all three of these variances, but again, there are not a lot of alternatives, and there really isn't any physical or environmental impact. It is certainly self-created, as most of these are, but I think the other merits are withstanding to approve the request.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated and a second. I would add, if it's okay to your motion, when you say lumber, you haven't expressed any intent to do this, but I would say any building materials as well, other than lumber, that if you're, no outside storage of that stuff. So, you know, put it in there with the lumber or put it in your garage or put it in the other shed, nothing, I mean, the idea to keep the yard free of any...
Usually the goal, yeah.
Right, okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve.
Second.
I think Andre.
George, second, okay.
Two seconds.
Just, I wanted to make sure you got that.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next application, please?
James Zegger, 77 Country Lane, Penfield, New York, 14526, requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a proposed front porch in existing residence with less front setback than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 77 Country Lane. Property is currently or formerly owned by James Gary Zegger and Alexis Viola Deo and is owned R115, SBL #124, 124.18-1-34, application #25Z0029.
All three of you? All right, if we may have your names and address for the record?
My name is James Zegger, 77 Country Lane, Penfield.
I'm Shy.
Shy?
Charlotte.
Oh, Charlotte, hey, I was going to say you're not shy, good for you.
I'm Shy.
No kidding.
She's also at 77 Country Lane, and I'm Alexis Deo, also at 77 Country Lane.
Thank you.
We're married.
Very well-prepared application, so thank you for that, all the details were there. So, in essence, you are replacing an existing stoop with a porch, and the porch is going to be slightly larger, I believe, by, looks like about eight, nine feet, but in essence, it's going to end up, you need a six-inch, an additional six-inch variance, because the front of the house is directly on the property line. Correct?
Yes.
Normally, under these circumstances, I would see if there's some way to make it smaller, but quite honestly, for six inches, based on, I went out, this I did get a chance to go and take a look at the property, you're just going to add to the overall aesthetics of the home, it should blend in well. A couple of quick questions, would you... Would you be adding additional, any additional lighting or anything out there for? Okay.
No additional lighting, no.
Gotcha. And primary use for the porch would be obviously for family?
Yep.
Yes, entrance, yep.
Gotcha. I really don't have any questions. It's just, it's literally a six-inch variance.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
No phone calls, no electronic comments? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this?
We have, one of our neighbors signed a letter.
Yeah, handed in a few.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, we'll add that. We'll add that to the application, yeah.
Thank you.
Most likely in favor?
Yeah.
Excellent. So does anybody else on the board have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
So we don't have any other comments, so let's move to the seeker.
Yeah, so this request will be a type two pursuant to seeker, requiring no additional action.
I will second that. We have a seeker motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now on the merits.
On the merits, I would move to approve. They are basically replacing a porch with a, or a stoop with a porch, which makes it more usable for the family. It's going to blend into the neighborhood, should fit well within the house, and only adds to the value.
And in this climate, it's more appropriate, too?
Yeah, exactly, in the climate, a covered porch is definitely more appropriate, so I would, I would move to approve.
All right, I'll second that as well. So we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye, Charlotte.
Next application, please.
Katrina Palmerlow, Nine Pewter Rock, Webster, New York, 14580, requests approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a front porch with less setback than permitted under section 250-1-5.1-F1 of the code at Nine Pewter Rock. This property is currently or formerly owned by Katrina Palmerlow and is zoned R120, SBL number 094.01-3-80, application number 25Z0030.
Again, may we have your names and addresses?
I'm Kip Finley with Victory Hill Land Company, 868 Winslow Road, Churchville. And this is my client, Katrina Palmerlow, at?
I'm at Nine Pewter Rock.
Excellent, thank you. So you're here tonight, two things. I guess there's a current porch there right now that's a covered porch?
Yeah.
That one would technically require a variance, even if it's sat there as it is right now, or does require a variance.
Right.
And you're looking to expand this by about a foot and a half towards the road and wider, I guess, towards the driveway side?
Yes, from where it is now to?
Towards the driveway.
To the driveway side. Yep, there you go.
26 feet wide, which matches, in your application, you had several examples in the neighborhood already that shows that that is, you know, within the character of the neighborhood to have something like that. And currently, you would be extending one and a half feet farther than where it sits right now, approximately. I think it was one and a half feet further than where the current porch is.
Right.
So from the roadside, it wouldn't really project, or you wouldn't see a big difference going forward as you're driving by compared to what's there now.
No, it's on the outside of a curve, too, so you really don't see it.
And as you're turning, correct, yep.
Yes. And even the cantilevered part sticks into the setback a little bit, too. I don't know how it was built in 1993 without a variance, but it was, and they've lived there 28 years, so it's never come up.
I'll say, at some point, because I looked at the, even the Google map or the Google Street View, and that went back to 2007 as far as they had it was there, but your application said even farther back.
Yeah, it was built originally with the house.
And even next door, there, I think you have, there's one that's very similar. Either next door or the one before has a very similar to what you have right now on their house, other direction, yeah.
They're all very similar homes with similar porches and stuff.
Yep. Let's see, any additional lighting that would project beyond where it's right now?
No.
Okay.
I think we're going to do solid lights.
There's, there's already a couple of lights on each side of the door.
But nothing, you know, that would project out, like, you know, since farther with that extra foot and a half that would sit out in front of that?
No spotlights or anything.
And the same finishes, it'll match the existing home?
Yes, the home's getting kind of tired. The gable ends, the vents were falling apart and stuff, so they're going to do a remake at the front of the house with new gable vents or some siding there and new shingles on the roof and stuff. So the house is going to get a makeover on the front, and the landscaping was all taken out to then, oh, that's what the landscaping was.
That's what it was.
Previously, yeah.
Yeah, it's all taken out now to, it was just overgrown.
Okay, so everything will since match and blend in together on the FAS one, it's all done?
Yeah. That's all I have for comments, questions.
Questions from the other board members?
Nope.
No? Okay. See no phone calls nor electronic comments? Any in the audience care to speak about this? All right, let's move to?
She talked to five of the neighbors, and they didn't want to give letters or anything, but here's their names and addresses.
Excellent, thank you.
And they're all in favor of it. They just didn't want to come to a meeting and didn't want to do a letter.
Sure, thank you, thank you. Onto the merits. I'll move that this type two action pursuant to seeker requiring no further review.
Second.
All right, we have a seeker motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then on to the merits of the application. And since we're not moving, it's not projecting out much farther, the existing porch is already encroaching on the setback variance. It's been there for 32 years without any issues from the neighborhood or any detriment to passersby's or adjacent properties. Extending that additional foot and a half shouldn't have an impact on the neighborhood. In terms of environmental, there's nothing that was identified that would be adverse. In the existing condition, it is self-created, but most of them are. The original porch was that way when it started, so I guess it could be also considered not self-created. We're just adding on to it a little bit, so, you know, flip a coin on that one, but we'll say it's still self-created.
They're almost all self-created.
Yeah, yeah. But with that, I will move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
All right. And may we have the next application, please.
Jing Chen, 687 French Road, Rochester, New York, 14618, requests approval for a change of use under section 250-5.5-B2 of the code to allow the operation of a nail and spa salon at 2150 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Penfield Park LLC and is zoned BN-R-TFOD, SBL number 140.01-2-70.123, application number 25Z0031.
Hello?
Hi, good evening.
May we have? Good, I'm well, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
May we have your name and address, please?
My name is Leo. I am not Jing Chen. I am the broker representing the tenant, Jing Chen. Unfortunately, they're not available to be here tonight, so I'm just filling in.
And obviously, they've given you permission to do?
Yes, yes, they have.
Okay, very good. So it's, what we really have here is your client's business, a nail salon business, asking to go into a site occupied formerly by Metro Mattress?
Yes.
Right. And because of the way our code is set up, a nail salon isn't a use that's specifically called out as a permitted use. So we just need you to come in and answer some questions about why you don't think the business will cause any harm to any neighborhood, neighboring properties or businesses or uses.
Of course.
And then one specific thing is if anybody that's going to work at this location will need a license from New York State?
Yes, that is correct.
So then, if we approve this, I'm sure a condition of approval will be that anyone that's working there that needs a license gets a license?
Yes.
Okay. So let me just ask you, are you aware of anything that your clients would do in operating this business that would cause any disruption to any of the neighboring businesses?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Is it there, it, well, I think we're all familiar with the area, that there's good ingress and egress out to the street?
Yes.
How many employees are we going to have, and is there enough parking for employees and patrons?
Yes, we, they're looking to employ about 10, and there's plenty of parkings in the back of the building.
Okay.
Should be more than enough.
All right. And how about, are you going to change any of the lighting on any of the buildings, or?
No, the exterior lighting will not change, except for the sign, of course.
Okay. Did you say sign?
Yes, yes.
Other than the sign identifying the business, you anticipate any other signs going up on there?
No, just the main building sign.
And whatever sign you'll put up will be compliant with the code?
Of course, yes.
Yeah, how about any music? Do you tend to play any outdoor music?
No music, outdoor.
And last question I have is, do you, will there be any, any uses that cause any sort of odor to come out of the building?
No, no odors.
Okay, I don't particularly care for the smell of nail polish remover myself.
Well, New York State Department of Health does require that it's ventilated through the roof.
Good.
So we will look at that done, yeah.
So is there two signs, and is that, because you have one on the front of the building and one on the back, right?
Yes, I believe the main entrance is actually in the rear.
Yes.
So is there going to be one on the front entrance, too? So there's two? And is that require anything?
Well, that's a, that's a good question, because this is really a, you know, change of use permit. So my reading of the statute is as long as we verify that the proposed use is not going to be detrimental to any neighboring uses, that basically we're just approving the substitution of use and owner.
Both signs can be swapped out.
Right.
And I think we would, as long as the proposed signage is consistent with what was there previously?
Right.
That it wouldn't require any further court approval.
Good answer. So you will keep whatever signage consistent with what that previously existed?
Yes, that is correct. I believe that once we have the signed proposal and the renderings done, we'll submit it to the town for approval as well.
Great. Okay, I don't have any more questions. Anybody else on the board?
No, sir. Or is it operation, or do you know how late they'll be open?
Their intended hours are from 9 to 7 every day.
I don't see any phone calls or electronic comments. I don't see anyone else in the audience, but in case somebody here wants to talk, anybody care to speak about this? No, all right. I will make a motion to declare this a type two action under seeker.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I further, on the merits, would make a motion to approve the change of use. I think the record is pretty clear that this operation is not, is in harmony with the area, sufficient ingress, egress, sufficient parking, the lighting's not going to change, and the signs, other than what they read, will not change. No outdoor music, no noxious odors, and the applicant will provide proof of licensing for all individuals required to be licensed. So for all these reasons, I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
And that was, I believe, the last application for tonight?
Yes.
No tabled items, so we will see you next month. Thank you very much. Go.